Good evening, we want to call the meeting to order. At this time, I'll turn to Reverend Mr. Peg.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for attending our members' work session. We're trying to get through the agenda, but we have someone here for public forum. And who will also be later on after we cover the agenda. We have individuals that have submitted leverage of interest for the vacant seat aboard upon Mr. Meyer's departure. So we will get to that after we go through our agenda. So, starting off, we have our building principals. Board members, you can receive your packets. Our elementary principals, are there any questions for any of our elementary principals regarding their packets? Okay, secondary principals, we have Mr. Plisco, Mr. Dillo, and Mr. Hutchinson here. Any questions for us principals with the secondary level?
My question. Mr. Dillo, it mentions in your report that Laura Smith and Janet Dietrich donate hygiene products to the South. Would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. Every single year, these two ladies have been wonderful to our Dallas and South students. Every year, they get a few kids whose families are in a bad way, and they donate Christmas presents and dinners to them. This year, they're at, with doing that, they also donate hygiene products for some of our students that may need just general hygiene products. And they can always come to the office and ask us for those types of products, and we hand those out in a discreet manner. So, those are two wonderful ladies that are really helping out the students in our district.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for our secondary principals?
I have a question for Mr. Dillo. How is the special needs program, the classes and the class sizes? How's everything working out for you? Is the healthcare bit probably a little bit?
We are still getting new students. I think our enrollment did increase this last month. We're getting quite a bit of students from Oklahoma, for some reason, I don't know why. So, and quite a few, I would say, I think one of them told me around four to five students came in with IEPs. So, we're in the process to get them converted over. It'll work our best, I think. I would love to have additional help. I think all the principals would say that at their schools. But, you know, we're making it work right now.
But there is, you have just a half-time position there, right? Someone is just there half-day.
That position.
Do you speak to Smithville?
I have two people that are half-time. One is half-day at North, half-day at South, and the other one is half-day South, half-day Smithville. And the half-day at North, half-day South is regular learning support. The half-day Smithville, half-day South is high school speaking.
Okay, I may come over and observe. Because I think the need is there. I'm just hearing from some people that the need is there, and that you need, maybe that half-time person in Smithville should be full-time at South. I want to check into that, and I'll, my fellow board members. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hey, thank you. Athletics, Mr. Dupont?
Just a few things. Passed out of winter sports bids, it should have been in your packet. If you have any questions, please let me know. We came in well under budget. Almost $3,000, 130, 400, more exact. Finished up our fall sports programs, getting ready to start winter sports on Friday, and that's getting ready to kick off. And I'll have to see you guys in executive session for some coaching.
Questions for Mr. Dupont?
Mr. Dupont, what are the weights on the football field?
We have elementary down there right now. They have a big game on Sunday down at the high, down at the high school field. They're going to be down there for two hours tonight and tomorrow night. We've done that in the past for those, for the elementary people.
Yeah, I didn't see anyone down there when I heard the five weights.
The ladies that came to the meeting last month that had concerns, I can't remember if it was cross-country or track, that there weren't shoes and uniforms and so forth. What have we done to address that?
Cross-country, and I had talked, had spoken to those ladies prior to, during the season, and also talked to Coach Thomas, and he said that the uniforms were fine at that time. We do not pass out shoes anymore. We haven't given out shoes or bought shoes for athletes probably in the last, I don't know, four or five years maybe, maybe even longer. But we will address that. We also do have some track uniforms that they could have used, but in talking to Coach Thomas, he said that uniforms were fine.
So, we've not done anything since the last meeting? I mean, the moms had concerns that literally the uniforms were falling apart during the meets and so forth, so they're still wearing the same stuff they were wearing?
Well, they're done. They have, they were done. The season's been over for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll address that. That's my problem.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Dupont? Okay, Mr. Cheslow?
Good evening, board. I hand it out to you again this evening, another handout that I just received today. That handout is included with the, inclusive with the Here Out study that we've been trying to get done. I've only got three so far to this point, three companies, which I've gave you. AGX, which was $11,500, Mid-Atlantic in August, which was $26,150, and this new company, Allegheny, who does all of Adelphi's work, which, that's where I got this information from. The man came down, and he has got a price, and he's got a range of a price between $5,400 and $6,000. He said that could go a little bit up, that could go a little bit down. Depends on the amount of time he has to put into it. This study is so open-ended that we can't, it would take someone a year, an engineer a year, to try to figure out everything through sample. So, these companies are trying to figure out what they need to do and everything, it's so open-ended. This gentleman said that we'll go through, we'll sample everything that we suspect is asbestos, everything else will be considered suspicious. His lab fees are phenomenal compared to everyone else's. His is only $15 for a lab testing. That is shipping, testing, and giving us the results. Out of the three, this gentleman here, he said he has two trips probably to the school district, and he could probably do everything we need. He will also give me the report, which I'll need to go, go around every six months and work with, and check every suspicious item, and non, you know, and containing at best what we do check, and go from there. So, I believe this is our best alternative route, but that is up to the school board itself. Other than that, in my board packet, I had everything in there with the high school stage rigging, the Midtown curtain replacement, and the playground resurfacing, which we can do in-house cheaper, and the clock repairs at Mason now. So, if there's any questions, I'm willing to be answering them.
Board, have any questions for Mr. Cheslow?
I got, I got one, Bill. Who has this price for a Mason Town Elementary for that playground? Is it, what, is it $15,000?
Well, sir, if you look on the backside, to resurface it the way it is dying, it would cost $15,000 to pull up the old poured-in-place rubber and replace it. What I suggest doing is, is putting in the refurbished curbs, which are made out of recycled plastic. We'll put the curving around what's already there and fill it with rubber mulch. In turn, we will double the safety factor. They will have rubber mulch in there that will protect them, and we can do it in-house for about 35, I think it was 35 or 3800 dollars.
Any other questions for Mr. Cheslow?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Will these curtains fit Mason?
I have no idea, sir. I've never measured either one of them.
Can we look into that to try to save our taxpayers some money?
I can measure them and do that, yes, sir.
Okay. And then, for the Pittsburgh stage, the proposal for $86,000, did you send out an RFQ in the newspaper?
No, I did not, sir, because that is CoStar's pricing, and they are about the only game in town. Ms. Jeanine Puduchy was here, who worked with many other schools. She also addressed that to the board at the time. I looked on what's called Thomas Net, many internet ID, many internet things right now. The closest to us right now is in Philadelphia, Pittsburgh stage, and in Ohio, they complete the job. There's a lot of things on there. There are suppliers and stuff, but you need someone that can do the complete job, be able to tear the rigging down, put it back in, in compliance, and put it back up.
Okay.
The people from Philadelphia would have to travel, spend time, everything else. I don't even know if they're on CoStars. I can call them and ask them if they would entertain coming out and giving us a price. They may not want to. The people in Ohio, again, they would have to end up getting clearances, things like that, or Pittsburgh State has their clearances. That's my problem with a lot of vendors right now, workers, is trying to get them in here to do work, they don't have their clearances, and they don't want to mess with the time to get their clearances.
Okay.
I'm from one of the Pittsburgh stages. They're familiar. Mr. Makin, I see you there. They have been to our school prior.
Yes, ma'am.
And they have done other work for us.
Yes.
Are you satisfied about them?
We've only worked with them once since I've been involved, and the work that they have done was well done, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should go. Pittsburgh stage did the curtains of last month, and they were well done as well.
I remember Jeanine Puduchy did state, stated that there wasn't really anybody else in the area that does stage rigging, rigging. So, you know, we can't have, we don't want to just go with them with the CoStar price. I can't have them check with some other places.
I also, I also talked to the other school districts in the area, which was Brownsville, Carmichael's, McGuffey, and them. I asked all the other maintenance supervisors, directors in those areas. I said, who do you use for your stage rigging? Everyone, I'm Pittsburgh, state, Pittsburgh, state, Pittsburgh. It's basically, it's like a land broadband here, who are you going to get for your internet?
Well, what is the scope of the work that we're going to be doing now? This, you know, over the last few months, you know, with your proposals, the costs went up double.
No, it hasn't gone double.
Actually, before, when this all started, it was around $80,000.
And that was a ballpark figure off of my head. I said 80, and we did say 80, roughly 80. We're at, what, $87,000 right now? I'm not a stage and rigging guy, but I just try to get a close price for that. The use of the stage is worth it, because we've been talking about this for six or seven years. Inflation hasn't been that great, and there's a lot of things that the drama does down there, plus other activities. So, we need a stage, and the safety problem too. Yes, it is, sir. It is completely out of compliance with safety. The ropes that are on that stage are the original ropes that were per then. Also, all your rigging has only one turn buckle or one safety clamp on it. Code requires three. The cabling is old, the ropes are old, the foot blocks are out of date. It's all out of.
I can hear a lot without looking at that.
We looked at that, and it's out of code. That's the main thing. We have to get the rigging back to code.
So, with everything that's being done, with Pittsburgh stage coming and showing us that it will all be in compliance?
Yes, ma'am.
Board, do we want to add to the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting to replace the stage rigging and purpose of the high school utilizing Pittsburgh stage?
I'm in favor of it.
I am too.
Mr. Makin, is there anything else that needs done as far as you're aware, as far as the stage is concerned?
When Mr. Cheslow and I met last week, we went through everything. They are actually replacing everything on the stage, and that is why the price jumped so much. We, I asked what we could do now and then wait to do things later if we could, and because of labor costs and the apparent raise in tariffs on steel, they said it would be, it would increase the price exponentially to do it in phases instead of doing it all at once.
Yeah, but my question is, this will take care of everything that you need?
Yes, sir, this is redoing the entire stage.
Okay.
Except for floor.
Except the floor. Oh, we're good with the floor.
But let me ask you something. At one time, did we have something over that floor that was painted black? But then there was some type of a water problem? I'm just trying to remember.
The only time we've ever put anything on the stage was, it was for a play and just for looks, and it was painted, and then we took it back up off, or it wasn't anything for safety or for ease of use.
But remember, there was talk about painted black for the production or something. There was talk of that.
Oh, yeah, I talked about it.
Right, right, right. But what we did is, I think they ran a slab down there, correct?
We discussed it, but we've never, we've never used it.
Yep.
Now, the problem with painting black right now with the floor you do have, every time you scratch it, you got to repaint it. So, when you practice before a production, soon, before you have your production, you're going to have to paint it to make it look good again. It's going to scratch up and look ugly, because the wood is not black all the way through. A lot of these stages that are black, it's basically almost like a black decking, like you get for your home. Just black all the way through, so if you scratch it, it's still black. With ours being wood, we can scratch it up and we can paint it flat black, but every time you lose something or whatever, you're going to see that, and that's, that's more work.
When I come to this, I'll.
I actually got us a price from Ferris's years, I think two years ago, to have the rolled-up rubber matting to roll up. I think, I couldn't remember what the pricing was, but it was.
That would be too much. I think it was.
I think it was around $5,000.
But that was going to be too much to bring it up.
So, we'll add that to the agenda. Any other questions for Mr. Cheslow?
I have a terrible question. On your board report, it mentions that sewage project for the high school in the area is projected to be around $250,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something that we can use project funds for? It is. That $250,000, what timeframe are we looking at for that?
We have to do that, ma'am, we have to do that between, soon as school's out next year, as soon as possible. That's why I'm working with K2 right now, to get all the drawings, and let's get this bid right now, because we have to get that one done while the students are out.
Your packet says, you're going to, that you were going to meet on November 6th.
Yes, we did. We did meet and everything, and we discussed moving manholes and everything else and stuff. We put the final gingerbread on it with Sam and K2 and engineering. Now, that price does not also include central office. We will have to tie central office in also, and they did put the tie-in probably about 300 feet from our outlet of our building. So, we'll also have to look at that one also. I just see, you know, they just put the outlet, or the tie-in point Monday. So, now we'll have to investigate how much that would cost to tie that office in also.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, I got one item in here on your list. Ask for prices from all three companies on your snow removal.
What was that, sir? I couldn't hear you, sir.
Snow removal.
The snow removal, I asked all three of our companies that are working for us right now for a total price on removing the snow at this building, because we have to do it completely now because of Adelphi being in here. We used to just do the front during board meetings and as needed, and that was a $50 charge. I asked all three companies to give me a price of snow removal, and Route 21 Stone was the lowest, and they were at $90 if I believe correctly. Please, can you help me? I think they were at $90.
Yeah, I have my thing in mind.
No, they are required to remove the snow on the sidewalks only. We are still responsible for the parking lots in the areas. That's the way that it was set up with the Adelphi.
Then maybe we'll pay a portion for that. Oh, okay.
Mr. Cheslow, in the past, we've had some problems with our snow removal as far as getting the job done, getting it done for the.
With one contractor, yes, sir. And me and Mr. Peg have actually brought him in, sent him down to central office, and talked to him, and he assured us this year there'll be no problems.
There shouldn't be a problem, because he shouldn't be, okay, one of the individuals that's going to do the job, because quite frankly, I think he gave us a shaft before.
There was a problem, but it was maybe like two or three years ago, and there was a large amount of snow, and we had a contract with them, but they wanted because that one snowfall was so much, they wanted an astronomical figure come up. Do you all remember that?
That was not the one that does the job as core now. That's two of the companies.
I mean, it was an astronomical figure.
That had to do with, that had to do with the number of times where that came out toward that snowfall.
But everyone else that had contracts at that time removed the snow for the price of the contract. There was one contractor that charged $8,000 to bring in heavy equipment to move the snow, and he moved it the very last day before school opened. The other contractors have all their lots open, and I fought against paying that, and I was.
We had that for a long time.
We did, we were seeking a mistake on that.
Can you hear the questions for Mr. Cheslow? How's the roof part there, it's not, the roofs?
The high school is probably about 96, 97% done. They just got a gravel from past the cafeteria down a little bit, and they're done. The north, we're going to do the walk-through. That's basically all we have to do over there. South, they're touched, they're finishing up a little bit of metals over there, and that's it, and it'll be done. All the roofs are within the 95% to 100% done right now.
They need to?
Hopefully not.
I will tell you while we were on roofs, that they did try to hammer it out last week while school was there, there was a slight odor. It's not bad, different rooms. We got a plan of closing the vents just so they can get it done. So, hopefully, they're going to be in there tomorrow and finish it. They did spend all day Monday, when kids weren't in school, to get it done. You could walk down the hallway, one room, you might smell it, the room beside it, you might not.
It depends on outside air dampers, which I shut all of them. Some of them aren't shutting 100%, and I told the guys to go back through, make sure they're adjusting and shutting 100%. You know, tonight, when I go home after the board meeting, that's when I'm going to shut them all. That late tomorrow morning when they get started, it won't pour any outside air. The one teacher did, after I shut her outside air vent, did open her outside window, and that was kind of bringing it in, and I pulled him off to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Cheslow. Financial, Denise.
You should all have an updated capital project schedule in front of you. I did add the $250,000 for the high school, the deferred sewage cap in. And I spoke with Mr. Dupont. I have the high school perk payment to field service, so I paid $36,000. Mr. Dupont would like to hold that. So, I'm going to remove that from the agenda for Wednesday night. Just a way to work some things for when we finish up. I also put the payments to Puduchy in for the valve replacement and the high school abatement crawl space. These projects were done before tomorrow this morning, so I did talk first through our law counsel. He knows that for reasons of the bond issue was broad enough that we could run this through here, but if we were not to, we'd come to the general conference. So, now we have, I think, that we can talk about.
Denise, the $250,000 for the high school deferred sewage cap in, was that included in the amount that you presented to the board when you brought the bond issue to us?
No, that wasn't. But I do believe they have it for other projects that are needed to be included.
But again, I felt that when we renewed the bond issue, that it was for X, Y, and Z, not A, B, C, D, X, Y, and Z. We keep adding, okay, to this. We're taking, we're taking care of certain things that were specifically mentioned there, but we've added several items that were not mentioned when we refinanced the loan. And of course, we have a problem with that.
If we don't take the 250 out of capital projects, that's going to be in the general fund, and that is not budgeted there, so we would be terribly obligated on the general fund.
But quite frankly, it wasn't taken into concern when we refinanced the bond issue. Was that right?
Did we work on that?
Yes.
Did we realize? I personally didn't realize.
I think they do try to word it broadly, so that as soon as you come up, you can.
Keep in mind, you had specific items, that you did have a generic in other capital projects, because you do have an obligation to spend that money in order to maintain the status of the bond that we're in front of.
Is it possible to designate a portion of that 250,000 to come from the capital projects, but only a portion, not all the 250,000? I think what it was, you know, one big thing is security, and we take, you know, we have those security measures. So, my question is, is that entire 250,000 have to be gated from these project funds? Or can we say that we're going to pay 200,000 in capital?
You could do all of them.
Okay. I think it's some problems, some wrongs. Oh, yeah, that's bigger, something. So, will we be waiting until we address some of the other issues before we say definitive life?
Yes, because you did, you know, you may have told, the board's discussion was, you wanted to take care of security, athletic field, and this training stage.
And there is, down at the bottom of.
I'm just kidding, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have been.
I'm scared. I'll take that.
At the bottom of the schedule with the green, even with that 250,000, there would be 137,000.
That's, that's immaterial. That doesn't matter. We've had parents, we've had the concerned parents that have raised more money, security upgrades than what the board has taken out of the bond refinancing. And I have a problem. Whenever we borrowed money, and part of that money was specifically earmarked for security, and we have, okay, found other ways that we think are more important to spend that money than to spend it on security. I have a problem with that.
Well, Mr. Dillon, I don't think it's more, more important, but I do want to bring everybody back. Last, last board meeting, we had parents here talking about a softball field, and there were some board members that wanted to spend money on a softball field. So, I mean, and I am, I'm all for joining the security also, but there is somebody here, of course, to do it. Have these things already been, I mean, I know we have a few back scanners, Mr. Peg, at the high school, but we were planning on joining the middle school also.
Myself, I believe security starts with having the security guard in every board.
I agree with that, Mr..
I think that's a place to start off.
I think security guards are people much more important than equipment, and not only are security guards, all, all working staff in the building need to be diligent for our security.
For this conversation, in context to the project funds, you can't pay salaries at the project funds, right?
Right, right.
Denise, anything else?
The only other item is the intermediate unit health consortium. We brought this up at the last meeting. They're trying to change their structure, or the top partner structure. Uh, we had some concerns about it, also, and we...
Yeah, I had concerns about one of the clauses, that they said if we adopt this amendment, we're confirming and gratifying everything your trustees have done to date. And one of my concerns was whether or not they had established any kind of, I use the term "loose" for the penalty for a district that would withdraw, because that is a consideration that we're looking at as a cost-saving matter. I understand from talking with their solicitors that that is a modicum. And at the last consortium meeting, um, districts who are contemplating leaving, they specifically asked if they would at least vote for a change in this trustee structure, um, to join us, whether or not they intend to leave. And I believe, Ms. Sheets, who attends every meeting, feels that it would be showing cooperation with intermediate unit facilities. You don't have to, it's up to you. One other thing I want to remind you. If we wish to leave this fiscal year, again, this fiscal year, we would have to notify the intermediate unit consortium by March 30th.
So, Board, would you like me to add to the agenda for tomorrow night? Um, devoted the IU One Health Consortium, and the colors changes. Again, that's creating equal management, equal labor, voting trustees. You want to add that to the agenda? Do you think, like...
Yeah, as long as it doesn't tie our hands, like...
Okay, I will have that added to the agenda for tomorrow night. Okay? Denise, anything else for this? Thank you. Um, Mr. Golden, good service.
It's been a busy month, had several meetings through the month. One of the main ones was probably with Camaro Edge. It's a POS system, and also works as a nutritional analysis system for our schools. It's tied in with the state of Pennsylvania, it's recommended. I'm going to continue to explore that, see what the prices are, and see what we're at with our parent system, influence. I wanted to get to participation. As you can see, our numbers are up. Uh, we have seen a little bit fall off at the high school, which we're trying to address to get those numbers back where they need to be. Also upcoming events, Grandparents' Breakfast coming up in Plow, AL, and also at Mason County, we'll put them on the board. Our Thanksgiving feast will be next Thursday. And Grandparents' Breakfast also at South Middle School. I do have one item that I wish to speak to you about from executive session, concerning personal nights.
Mr. Golden, we're having a group come in from Colorado. I think 200 students are going to be prepared. Are we responsible, or is it going to cost the school district for anything food preparation to mark, and are they going to do it?
We will be preparing the food for them. All of that cost is to be reimbursed to the district. Um, when we met with those folks, I believe that was late spring, and I expressed to them, you know, our labor costs, and our rep, that, I was told, no worries. That will all be billed back to that organization and be reimbursed. Uh, also, Mr. Golden, you brought that up. I am pushing forward for a summer feeding program this year at probably two or three of our schools. Mr. Peg and I met early last week to discuss which buildings we would have that at. But I think it would be very beneficial to our community.
Last year, we didn't have it, and the other school districts did. Some people asked me, and I said, yes, and I found out that we did not have it.
Yeah, we haven't had that program for several years, but, uh, I've been working with Pittsburgh Food Bank, who is very helpful, and also, marketing that program also.
So the key thing about this program, there are students coming into the area, the elderly needs help, and they'll go around and do the maintenance in there. The younger ones will do safety lower level, and the other ones will do things which will help now. If you're not sure, check into Brownsville and the Lower High School District. They have already done it. And it's a benefit to our people that don't have the funds to get some work done at hardly any cost.
Mr. Golden, may I ask a question about that? Um, now, that's the people that are going to house the high school, correct?
Right, right.
Is that going to be coinciding with the time we're going to be doing the sewage project? And do you want to have the sewage there?
I don't know. That's a coordinated thing between a school district and them. I know they're coming in for two weeks, but I don't know the exact dates.
It's depending on...
Right.
It'll be dependent on school graduation and time we give out. They have already been made aware of that, the reach program, but...
Yeah, but what about the tap-in?
About the what?
Sewage tap-in, for the high school deferred.
We, I worked that out with K-2 Engineering, that we will not shut the entire building down nowhere whatsoever. We're going to start at the sewer tap, and work our way back first to the building. So we'll put in our tap to the sewer line, go back, set our new manhole. We'll go to both directions, and then we'll shut this half down for only one or two days, tie it in, shut this half down for one or two days, and tie in. Instead of working from the building to the sewage tap, I'm working them in reverse.
Mr. Cheslock, if you could timeline it on what they're doing, and what the students are coming in from Colorado, we might not even have a problem.
No, we should not have a problem nowhere whatsoever.
They're not coming in, they're not going this same way as they're coming in.
The students are coming in the first two weeks, as soon as graduation's done. We'll be working down at the main sewer line, coming back past the sewer, the sewage plant. We got to set a new manhole, and then we got to put our wives in and go towards the schools. Then, once we do that, we could work on, say, the gym side, and it'll only be two days that it'll be down, and that will be after, they're long gone.
That's good, thank you.
Yes, sir, I've tried to plan everything out.
Mr. Golden, the last chance breakfast, are those going on at all of the elementary schools?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, how was participation?
All, I'm sorry, all except for Mason County.
Was there a reason we're not going to Mason County?
Participation was really high when I applied for these programs. Um, what we have done is, uh, let me see. Mr. Plisca and I have talked about, okay, if there are students who did not have breakfast, they're permitted to come down to the cafeteria. So we do have it still available, it's just not marketed in Mason.
Mr. Golden, that doesn't cause any disruption in the classroom? You haven't got any feedback from teachers?
Um, I've had a lot of positive feedback from teachers. A few concerns, yes. The, uh, the beginning of it, you know, I guess how it was all planned was getting buy-in from all of the teachers, custodians, principals, to make sure the program works well. Um, disruption in class, I think it does take a little bit from, especially at our middle schools, where we have an overwhelming amount of participation. Um, but working with the principals at both North and South, we have made arrangements, or I should say, altered the schedules to where they're coming down my classroom, and they're grab-and-go meals, it takes approximately five minutes in and out.
Then they have to open the bag, and crush the bag, and make noise in the classroom. Maybe I'm old school, I really weren't allowed to chew gum in class. It just seems odd to me.
And that was a huge concern, that, and, you know, just everything that goes with that. And making sure it gets back to the great reception rules as well.
I think it's wonderful, though, for the students to, rather than sitting until lunch, you know, the kid that's truly hungry, to have that opportunity. I think that's wonderful, even with that disruption, I'm sad, but...
I see good sides, and, you know, I guess my selling point last year, when I brought this all up, was, you know, during our PSSA testing, we march all the students down for breakfast, because it stimulates the brain. You know, with that said, I would hope that every student's eating breakfast every day. That's our goal.
Mr. Golden, can you tell me how many grandparents' breakfasts we have?
Five?
Five?
I believe, real quick.
I personally would rather see that money spent on a summer program.
That's just my... I actually agree with Mrs. Wayne on that. I'm concerned, I've been in the elementary schools now, and I see the tables that the grandparents have to sit in. I'm seeing a hip fracture.
I just don't, I mean, I don't know. I don't want to see harsh anything, but I just don't see the purpose. I just...
How much do they cost this year? Because I mean, I know that students pay a small fee for their guests. So how much is it really costing them?
This guest is paying $5 for the breakfast. It's, uh, we're almost at break-even, with the lower of the loss.
So it's not, it's not really...
It's more of community involvement, and I think I can speak with principals, not board.
I'd rather see them in our libraries. I'd like to see our libraries more open. I've said that all the time.
That's something.
Yeah, I'd like to see our library doing as much as our football field's doing.
I'd love to per discussion on that. I hate principals individually about that.
Okay, I was just wondering, it's just my opinion, I just...
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Technology, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Peg. I just would like to touch on one thing that was listed in my board report. Uh, we finished the installation of the one-button studio of the high school. Uh, this initiative was funded by a grant that Mr. Hutchinson secured through SSIP. Uh, we began staff training today. Um, I'd like to invite you all to take a look at it if you're ever at the high school, have a chance. It's located in the library. Um, I think it's going to be a great thing for the kids to utilize, and I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Mr. Golden, I've worked out the South Middle School's security cameras. You want to touch on those?
Yes. I spoke with Mr. Dillo recently, and he expressed, um, an elevated concern for the need of additional cameras, as well as upgrades for the older cameras that he still has. Um, after speaking with Mr. Peg and Denise, I was going to ask the board if the funding that was earmarked for security would be available to purchase cameras for both middle schools to bring them up to the same par as the high school as far as surveillance.
About being security cameras, would that be through capital projects, Denise?
It could be, yes.
How old are the present cameras that are at South?
They have probably a handful or two of brand-new cameras that we put in, um, a few months ago. And the remainder of the cameras are probably, if I had to take a guess, they were installed before I started, and I've been here for thirteen, fifteen years. So they're...
There were some cameras, and I don't remember the specific timeline, but I've been on the board, and we purchased cameras for, I thought both middle schools, but I know South, because we had a theft of a riding lawnmower. Uh, and it was because the cameras were not functional. And, uh, my memory serves me correct, and I believe it does, it's been closer than thirteen years since we've had cameras in there. Uh, I'm just, and I have no problem with cameras if they're needed. That's not my point. My point is, what's the life expectancy of these? Uh, the period, and I have been with them more dearly as long as some other members, but this is at least the third time that I can remember that security cameras have been purchased. That's my concern.
The cameras that were there, that are old, they're analog cameras, they, um, they have a longer life expectancy, um, but the infrastructure has a less life expectancy, if that makes any sense. Um, all the new cameras that are put in now are digital, and they record digitally through the, uh, our network to a server that sits in each building. Um, those cameras, you know, we've had them at the high school for, what, gee, five, six years now? And, you know, they still act like they have the day we put them in. Um, so I think, you know, with the technology advances, we'll be able to get a longer life on those items.
How many are you talking across?
Uh, after speaking with, um, Mr. Dillo, and just kind of observing the current layout, probably 25 to 30 cameras for each middle school would suffice.
What percentage of the number of cameras of the total number is that? If you do 25 at North and 25 at South, is that going to replace all of the cameras that are going to be all new?
Correct, it'll replace all of the old analog cameras that are in place now.
So it's a matter of the technology has really gone a long ways.
It's that and the camera quality. I mean, you know, with, looking at an old school tube TV versus a high-def flat screen, that's kind of how I am there.
On a different note, there were some issues at one of the elementary schools that were fire hard. Is that all been taken care of?
Yes.
Okay, so we're in compliance with whatever...
Yes, bill met with the Verizon folks when they were on site, and that's been...
And that was strictly a telephone issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Dillo, Mr. Plisca, does the 25 cameras cover every area that needs cover?
I would say so. This building's different, but...
Yeah.
I think for me, I mean, if I look at a camera, if I have, say, a few cameras in the cafeteria, like, up there, just to make sure I see every area. Just kind of covers, not only that much.
I mean, and that's, you know, that's my point. I don't want, you know, three or three years from now, you know, an episode happened and say, oh, well, we didn't have a camera there, you know? Because that's happened.
If we're going to do it, if you need 28 cameras, put 28. That's my opinion.
You want me to add the agenda for, to prevent Chris Bowman to evaluate cameras and to replace as needed? Would you put that on the agenda for tomorrow night? Okay?
Yeah. Ballpark price, babe.
Chris, you have a ballpark price per camera?
Yes, uh, going off the 25 number that I had just evaluated with, we're looking at approximately $8,000 to $9,000. So...
Per school?
Per school, so...
Roughly 20 grand.
Roughly 20 grand, it should be 20, yes.
It's roll work. Okay, thank you, thank you. Special Ed, Mrs. Donovan, Mrs. Britvich?
I just wanted to make the board aware that we have two learning support teachers at Flava, and both ladies, based upon the number of students who are currently on the testing list, are projected to go over their caseload maximums probably by Christmas. Um, back in one of the summer work sessions, I think it was July, I had said this is probably a likelihood before the end of the school year, but they're sort of well ahead of what my timeline would have been for that to happen. So, um, I don't, at this time, recommend a permanent position be created, because I think it's too early to do that. I think, come closer to the end of the school year, we could take a look at where everyone's numbers are, and make better decisions about where our student needs are at that time, where we could better place our staff based upon the needs of the students. Then, you know, I hear, you know, Mrs. Swinney's needs, her desire for needs, and I think that we could take that Flava position and maybe roll that into a position at North, and maybe use that, um, lack of a half of this position at North, and use that position over for a full time at South. So again, instead of creating a position now, maybe talk to Lee about how we could maybe put a sub in the remainder of the year, work with the association, and see how we could do that, just to get the children's needs met, keep in compliance with the state, and then take a better look come April or so, to see what positions we really want to create to make sure that we're getting everybody's needs met in the best way possible at that time. sure that we're getting everybody's needs met in the best way possible at that time, where the numbers are, because I'm also here, we're getting some kids still moving in from some really unusual locations and buildings that don't really tend to get a lot of movement, so that's my recommendation from now on, I just wanted to make you aware, because that doesn't necessarily have to be on this month's agenda, but I think it does need to be on next month's agenda, if it is something indeed that has to be on the agenda. So, you know, something for you to think about for CLABA, because their need does have to be addressed in the immediate future, because they will indeed exceed their cases, they're very, very high, and they're continuing to refer kids in a way that we're not going to go through very much longer without me having to contact the state, because we have to let them know if we're going to exceed caseloads, and they will come back and tell us, you have to put another staff member there, so we want to do it in a way that's going to work for us, so that's really all I had to add, other than what was on my, there's no more of course.
Any questions for Mrs. Donovan or Mrs. Britvich?
I just like the idea of reevaluating every building come up April.
Yeah, and I definitely have some ideas that I think you will be happy with.
Okay, that's, I'm willing to accept that right now, thank you.
May I add a couple of things, Mr. Peg, if you have one?
Yes, Mrs. Britvich, right.
We're also getting ready for our Indicator 13 review, and that basically is our transition program for students that are going out into the real world after high school, or to another school. We're in the process of taking a look at the IDPs that we sent for review, and so far, so good, we are not coming back with a lot of issues on that. We had a program today from the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation at the high school for our life skill students, that's directly related to transition, it's called Blueprints, and it was a very good program, we're planning to have that in place at the high school also for our juniors and seniors, but probably till, not till after the first of the year, and we're taking, I'm trying to visit with some of our learning support students and our life skill students at the high school, our ninth graders, that came out of middle school, just to make sure that they're transitioning well, and I'm pleased to announce that many of them are doing a very great job there at the high school already, they seem to have transitioned from middle school to the high school very well. Some of them are having some issues, but I think that that's to be expected, we're working with them, try to get some of their things that they have going on straightened out. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mrs. Britvich or Mrs. Donovan? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Beazak, elementary, federal curriculum?
Yes. I wanted to just bounce off a little bit about the grandparents' breakfast, what I wanted to say was that initially, a long time ago, those, those breakfasts, those luncheons, they did, they, they were somewhat based upon the theory of the Title I parent engagement piece. It was to bring families in, to make their, to make sure that there was this educational component to it, where we inform the parent, the grandparent, whomever, of what was going on in the school, how they can be better involved in their child's education, so I have to say that some of that was initiated back in the day, a long time before, maybe before Mrs. Jordan, where those were all initiated, and again, they did have a premise, it does appear that, that, you know, when you start taking three, four days out of an instructional week to, to, to house all these people for these visits, it does get to be a bunch, and we can probably look at ways to include families coming into the schools, maybe in a different way, if the board does want to entertain that, but like I said, there was a purpose for them that was very much constructionally based at the time, and outreach to the parents. Also, I just wanted to tell the board that, and I had included into my packet, was that we had a very good Act 80 Day. Teachers are working very hard, looking at their data, and I know that you all hear that a lot, we're looking at the data, we're looking at the data, but they really are, at all grade levels, really digging deeper, looking how that they can change their instructional strategies till the end of the year, and again, not just to answer the needs and meet the needs of the test, but to also make sure that they are enforcing, not enforcing, they are providing the students with the skills that they need at that particular grade level. So, again, they are working very hard, and it's interesting, we're using tools that we've already had for a long time, and I think it's just looking at it from a different perspective and having people assist us in our efforts, so I did want to thank them for a pretty good worthwhile Act 80 Day. I do want to say that in my past, the previous hypothesis about looking at kindergarten age, I did find that, based upon a very primitive study, was that when we looked at the students that may not be performing up to par at this particular time of year, taking these kids, isolating, looking at their birthday, it's not necessarily a birthday issue. It seems, it appears to be more of a pre-K program type of an issue. And then when we get into that discussion, what do we do, our buildings are to max capacity, I'm not certain where we would house those, but we probably need to explore options as to what happens after kindergarten, do they move on, do they stay? If they stay, we're looking at very large numbers, and where would we house, maybe transition first grade? And then in general, looking at what happens with the pre-K, or a Head Start participation, or one lack of, it's a lot of the time, as we had discussed with one parent in particular, just in a visit, it was that couldn't get in, or didn't have the transportation to get there, to the particular program, so I find, you know, there's, there's, people have opinions about that, because apparently transportation has to be provided, but again, so...
For Head Start, but not for pre-K counts?
So, we have the opportunity of, we are going to extend this conversation to those in charge with PIP, of the same pre-K program, and again, it is, it really wasn't a birthday issue, from what we could gather from looking at the numbers that we did, so I did want to share that to the board, that maybe we were off-base. Again, you'll find articles, I just found one today, about parents red-shirting their kid in kindergarten, and there's some merit to it, and there's some, you know, it would help us to some extent, but at the same time, not if they're not going to attend a program while they're not in kindergarten, so we have some decisions to make, it is difficult in the buildings, I have one elementary that, you know, she has two, two kindergartens only, and her numbers have bumped up, she very well could have three, but at this point, she has two, so we've gotten creative in how we're going to provide the assistance to that particular building. So, those are some things that we're going to continue to discuss with building principals, and look at the outside agencies, and see how we can work together on, starting out small at least, to start to address these issues. The other thing is, is that I didn't hand it out, I have it right here, so when you're ready to go to executive session, I did provide you with a basic summary of some important data, of test results, that some of you have requested, you want to see very clear, very, very simple charts, I think that it would be, you can look over it, you can contact us, if we need to have another meeting about any of the information, or if you'd like to meet with you personally, that would be fine. But again, it's, the data that I am going to give you is actually what the performance was, I want you to know that the state does look at that, that at performance level, but they also look at growth. I did not provide you with the growth data yet, I was just apprehensive, I'm not certain that until it gets released to the public or to the parents, if I was able to get an answer, am I allowed to provide a packet already to start disseminating this PVA stat? Because there are, there's some teacher things associated, I want to know what I'm allowed to give and what I'm not allowed to give, I mean, openly like this. So I do have those for you, for your review.
We can have the test scores.
Yeah, I have them, I have them here.
I mean, that's something that's not presented, so...
Right.
I would like to take this time to thank Mrs. Beazak and all those administrators that helped prepare for the in-service we had, it was a phenomenal in-service, teacher participation was very high, I think it was a very worthwhile in-service day for our teachers, so thank you to all who participated in getting that prepared for our staff. Secondary curriculum?
I want to ask, I want to comment on Mrs. Beazak's comment. Thank you very much for that comment, and I didn't mean to sound flippant about grandparents' Day, because I am aware that many of our grandparents are most likely primary caregivers for many of our students, however, if there's no educational component to the grandparents' breakfast, I really don't see a whole lot of benefit, and I am concerned about risk, I, I am a healthcare provider, and I work with that population, and I think that the accommodations in an elementary cafeteria may be, may be difficult for some people, and I, I think that that was my big concern, I can, I don't know, maybe I've been nursed for too long, and I just see broken hips coming out of those tables.
Well, I think this is fine, it's just on the education, I've really never thought about it from a health standpoint, but the education part, I...
But I will say what we want to be careful of, is just that, whatever we do, decide to do, the key is we collectively as a district, because where I run into problems as far as in my position as federal, and even meeting with the, you know, with the District Parent Advisory Council, who are the representatives, who are the spokespeople for the federal money that I work with, we see that when we meet, one building does not want to let it go.
But this is an activity that we need for, for...
We would like, there's been talk about you making it, one particular, you tell me across the district about what school's going to do what, what's going to do what, when one makes the leap, takes and makes something a little different, there's a lot of pushback, especially if they find it's four elementaries, it's very difficult, you get five elementary schools, everybody with their own personality, every building, and I mean that culturally, so, you know, what's good for one may not be good, you know, work for the other, or the other building doesn't want it, even among the parents when they're talking. So again, the, the key thing is, is finding a way to still, we have to engage the community, we want them into our buildings, we welcome this.
I understand that, but I, I don't feel, I'm with Mrs. Frank, I don't see the educational benefit from it, and it's taking one, two hours away from the day, I mean, I'd like to see our test scores, you know, that's, that's the big thing.
Troy mentioned financially, that it's not even break-even, so we're going to have to look at raising the cost to do this, or cutting it out altogether. Financially, you were looking at health, you were looking at education.
I mean, is this not from, from the principals and teachers in the elementary schools, is this not something that the kids get really excited about, and it's a really good activity, and it's important, I mean, education is also, is it not getting the kids excited about coming to school and wanting to be involved in it, I mean, I just, it seems like for the little bit of money that it costs, it's a really good thing that the community and the kids are forward to.
I personally, we, we have the lunches there for, we have the breakfast there for them, it's just, you know, it's just an opinion line, I think we could do something different that would probably engage, I'm all for engaging the community, I'd like to know how many people come, and what the feedback is from the grandparents who come, and we have five, that each elementary has just one grandparents' breakfast, in my life.
Well, some have, some have modified it because of the term "grandparent," it's, you know, very important day, breakfast, because, you know, you have kids that...
Sure, I understand that.
The, the, you know, the definition of family and grandparents changed too, and that's unique to each building.
I understand that completely.
You know, and yes, the kids are thrilled, and trust me, there's not one staff member here that lets a kid feel like an outcast, in the event that they don't have a representative, there's provisions made for those kids, and they get to participate, you know, to the fullest extent, but again, it is, we want, we want, and the thing is, is we do, we're obligated federally to have a certain portion of our money, and it is, it is, you know, suggestions come from the Parent Advisory Council, and again, we have those activities, generally there's a theme, generally a parent gets involved, that, you know, that they walk away with this, or what the federal things are paid for, you know, you just have to watch spending it on...
So we could reinstate some educational programs for the grandparents, like, you know, giving them some tips on...
Yeah.
We do, we do give magnet reading tips every time that they come in. There may be a moment they can...
Okay, so there is an education, yeah.
There is a small education, you know, but these two. I'm slightly different, I published you guys this earlier, but I saw some community concerns about, is CLABA not letting parents come to the musical this year, and are you doing a grandparents' breakfast there?
We were not willing to have the parents come in for the musical, but they are now.
They are now?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was just a decision I made for safety concerns of what's going on in society, and we're doing a VIP breakfast at the end of the year, it's not a grandparents' breakfast, but so the, I found to have more success there, nobody's left out, if their grandparents aren't there, then we, then they can pick one person as a VIP at the end of the year.
Well, that's, that's another thing, since you said that, like, how many grandparents get to come with one child? I mean, it's a non-conventional family, so they might have four sets of grandparents.
Right.
So you can get into that.
Usually, I'm limited to...
Or you can have, or you can have the opposite side, if, if there's some grandparents that go, and they have eight kids with them, to one grandparent, that's, you know...
Because we have that too.
Seriously, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hutchinson, secondary, any questions for Mr. Hutchinson? Jay, Mr. Hutchinson, you have any? No, we did, did that twenty-five thousand dollars for that PCCD grant, so we did get them on that, it should be released in the spring, so you all will have to decide, that's the route you're going to go, we did write it for the bag scanner, for that, would at least do for one middle school, so we did receive that, but it will not be released till the spring.
What's the timeframe to spend that, do you know?
No, I don't, I'm waiting on it, it just came out, the schools that received it, the majority of schools in Pennsylvania, if you applied for it, received it, but the timeframe's kind of shaky, they said probably after January first, that they would know more about of releasing the money, and I think it depends on what section you apply to. What we would like to do is, is that grant was written to purchase a bag scanner, you know, for middle, for the middle schools, I know one bag scanner, I think was roughly like twenty-one thousand or so, cheap, is that what they were?
Twenty, twenty-two something, I think.
Yeah, twenty-two, it's changed. So, I mean, that would pay for one bag scanner, plus a portion of another at the other middle school, and there was one that we were looking at purchasing for the high school as well, that was entered from the student lot, so, but we don't want to spend, order that equipment now, before that money's released to us, because they may come back and say, well, you can't use that, you know, so we're going to have to wait and continue what we're doing at this time for the middle schools. Any questions for Mr. Hutchinson? Transportation, Mr. Farne?
Good evening, everyone. Since my board report was published, I'm currently working on a project to further maximize our state transportation reimbursement by cross-checking our, as mentioned, we pulled from Safire to verify that every student has a bus assigned, a part of the component for our reimbursement is based, and a big portion of it is based on having students sign a bus, so I found some disparity in those numbers, so we're working on, on that project right now with each individual school, but other than that, I'm looking for questions, if you have anything for me.
You had told us last month, Mr. Farne, that the bus contractor had had difficulty getting all new buses that were supposed to be online, can you give us an update?
Sure, can. In the past two weeks, they've received twenty-two of the twenty-five vehicles, however, they are waiting for plating, there's a term for that, sort of similar to like a documentation that comes from the manufacturer to the state, so they take it and put a license plate on that vehicle, so that's the process there, and now the vehicles are on their lot, but they're not yet in service.
Does, does that number, and I mean the, the 2019 buses, does that include the mini buses, or are those the full-size buses?
Those are the mini buses, the full-size are already online.
Okay, because I've noticed, I've noticed some that, in my mind, were kind of questionable as far as the age of the vehicle.
Yeah, if you have anything specific, I'll be open to the topic you'd like to discuss.
Thank you.
Any questions, are there any questions for Mr. Farne? Oh, I have one. Hey, Phil, are those score shovels banned, going?
Oh, the district ones, yes?
Yes.
I'm not having the data in front of me, my quick answer's a parade, I know, I just talked with Dwayne this morning.
They're being utilized there, they're being...
Oh, yes, in fact...
JROTC just came back yesterday, Monday, when I was down there, from a parade, but yeah, they've been... but yeah, they've been, uh, JR, uh, JR OTC have used them, I would say, and I can give you a report in December on what they've done so far in November. I'll bet you just them have saved three thousand dollars from the month of November.
A pacer boat. Four, four in total for the JR OTC, just for that one asset, just for that, that group. And of course, they've been used by principals and, and sports and so forth, so, and they're using it for life skills transportation now for their community outreach projects, so, I'll probably, you know, uh, let's just say budgetary constraints permitting, I would think they're going to be paid for in their entirety, uh, this year and I'll probably look towards asking for, for another one, uh, for the next school year. It's not, it's not plausible of a, an outcome of this.
We keep them clean?
Yes, we are.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parton. Chief Malaki?
I really have nothing at this time, I need a couple minutes in the exec room.
And I, I'd already mentioned about the bag scanners are utilizing money for the PBCV, PBCV grant, twenty-five thousand for those, once that money is released, I think in January. I got a question for Chief. Yes. I don't mean to interrupt. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Don. Head, head, you might know this too, Chris, is that safety issue that caught last month at the elementary school, has it been talked about?
Yeah, uh, we met, I, I believe it's resolved.
Okay. Uh, um, I haven't heard anything, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I mean, we, we made some changes, I, I just don't want to.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I, I think the issue's been resolved as far as what we will do in the future.
Okay, that's good.
That issue now has helped change all schools that do, right?
Yes.
The issue that came from one has been discussed and it could be an effect to all schools.
It was brought up at the district safety committee, so it's going to trickle down to all the schools.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chief? Okay, um, under other administrative, um, the board, all board members were given a school email account if you would like to utilize it and that's one way I'd like to increase communication, so you all know, uh, you would get a, a district calendar that would have every separate school in a different color code to let you know what's going on that particular month at the school or something you'd like a visitor to see. So, um, if you have any questions about the email accounts, um, you can see Kathy Hirschberger or Chris Bowler in the mail at any time. Um, the, uh, we do have some here for, for public forum, um, from Ford Business, uh, it wasn't on, it wasn't on your agenda, so would the gentlemen from Ford Business please come, uh, come forward, Chris?
Good evening, board and, uh, audience, um, first of all, on a personal note, I want to, uh, thank the board members. I, I sit on a couple boards in Fayette County, um, I know how much of a time commitment it can be to, uh, to serve on these boards and, um, you know, it's great, I appreciate it. Um, I'm Jonathan Warlow from Ford Business Machines, I'm the owner. Uh, we're a locally owned office equipment provider out of Fayette County. We serve over thirty school districts throughout the region and, uh, we wanted to bring an opportunity up to the district and to the board, um, for, um, consideration. We had, um, saw the Xerox presented in earlier, um, it was March, in June of this year, some opportunities for some savings and, uh, um, also turning over the fleet with new technology. Uh, we wanted to throw our hat in the ring too. Uh, we're a local co-stars, um, vendor, um, all of our employees, uh, our headquarters is here in Fayette County, um, not all of our employees, the majority of our employees are based here with locations in, um, Pittsburgh and then up in Mercer County as well. So we serve all of western PA and, um, we had our team here, Doug Sander and Pete, who lives in the, the district, put together some solutions for you based upon the information that we did have. Um, we did our due diligence and wanted to at least put our hat in the ring, um, for the consideration. Um, on the, it's about twenty-one thousand dollars a year savings, um, and I know in a budget of fifty-plus million dollars, that's a small, small amount, but we thought that we should at least bring that to the attention of being the local provider and, um, you know, if you give us the opportunity to be able to serve the district, uh, we'll do our best and, um, we'll do it right. So, I'll turn it over to my team here, put together the presentation, they can go a little bit more than I will, just talk a little bit about how we did the comparison and, um, a little bit more about the solution.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Pete Mason, right this here. And, um, so, after we noticed the Xerox had, put it down, we looked at the light panel and the four minutes, um, from us were leaving, we drove down a little bit further and started focusing on what the copiers and printers were looking like. And the printer fleet has multiple models and makes and we feel we can streamline that and replace some of the older and use some of the newer, use the MPS on that. And then also with the copiers, in our proposal, you'll see they're all brand new, so there's nothing, there's no older machines that have been folded into, um, the proposal, everything's brand new. So, as Jonathan answered, whenever we solve the savings that we can do, we figure that you might know how to use that money a little bit better than somebody else. Do you all have any questions?
How long would the contract be?
We base this one five-year.
Five-year contract? And replacement of the machine when needed?
Yes.
You sell some buyouts, you know, printers and things like that, is that covered by you all?
Everything's covered except paper.
About repair?
Yes. Everything is covered.
Except?
For paper.
For five-year contracts?
Yeah. And another thing I'd like to add, we're, we're eleven miles up the road, fourteen service techs ready to go.
What is your response to our request?
They've been forty-four hours.
Forty-four hours?
Yeah, we, we would guarantee the district a four-hour response time. Um, we tracked it out last year, those are stats that we track, so, um, we were at two-point-eight-three hours for all of two thousand seventeen, so those are, um, being a locally held company, I want to make sure that we, we are being cross-minded, so that is, that is a stat that we do want.
Okay. Do you have other school districts?
In Fayette County?
Yes, we do. We work with, uh, almost every school district, um, except Union Town and Albert Gazzu, we work for Royal Highlands, Brownsville, Conneville, Frazier, um, the intermediate unit one, um, I don't know what else I could forget.
You all do the tech school too?
We do.
Which is something I, something I'd like to add too, is in your first two weeks of the deployment at Ford, you have to go through all your clearances, so everybody's ready to go. I'm like, he said we're going to over thirty school districts, so every employee that's in that building is, has their clearances.
Denise, their proposal says, uh, replacing desktop printers as needed up to fifty-two devices. Do you know how many we presently have?
Well, I don't, I don't know, Chris, Chris, do you know how many?
I want to say, oh, just this is off the top of my head, I want to say we have around ninety-some throughout the district.
Yeah. Okay, so in the light panel, we, we had counted fifty-two printers, so.
But, but that's all right. What we typically find is that some of the printers in the fleet are, are still good, so, um, I mean, the, the whole premise of this isn't that we would have every bit of information, we haven't done a walkthrough or, or any of that, we just wanted to get something in front of you to say, hey, we're here, we're local, we want a shot at this thing as well, um, and, you know, if you'd give us that opportunity, that's what, we want to put our best.
Would you be willing to do a complete walkthrough?
Yes, sir.
Now, I, I have no problem at, at all with, with your company or with your proposal, I just simply want to make sure that it's apples to apples and that, uh, you know, if we need ninety-two, uh, printers, that we're going to get a, a cost, you know, for ninety-two printers or whatever that would be.
Yes, sir. It is.
So Chris, do we, do we own all the printers that we have now?
We currently do, yes.
Yeah, so, so there is a good chance that we wouldn't need to replace all ninety?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the Xerox machines are leased, the printers are licensed.
Okay, so would you, your company would be willing to do repairs on the ones that the district already owns?
Yes, that's typically when we come into that environment, that's what we see.
When you replace one, what happens? The old belongs to the school district, it goes back to you?
It's typically property of the school district, um, they're of very little value, I would say, so, um, and they're tough to dispose of sometimes, I'm sure you're aware, but, um, we can help with that too, so we can take them back as well if needed.
When can you do the walkthrough?
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
I think we.
Feet and butt are good on feet, so they're, they'll, they'll be, they'll be ready.
And you guys are willing to do the buyout?
Yes, sir. So, um, being a multi-line, um, dealer, we have three manufacturers that we go to to get pricing. Um, the opportunity that we presented to you today was Conic Minolta and, um, we pushed the buyout off to them, so it's still reflecting in the cost savings to the district on a monthly basis, but, um, they were eating.
Would you buy this company out, pay them off, and you're still going to save us twenty-one thousand dollars a year?
Yes, sir.
When can you do that?
One more question, of the ninety-plus machines that we have, how many are Xerox machines?
Probably not even enough to fill one hand.
Okay.
And I'm talking printers, not coffee printers. Yes. Yeah, and Mr. Don, that, that was part of our thing, is to kind of standardize your fleet, so that you.
Yeah, I knew that and I thought that was a good idea, that we have, you know, people that move from building to building need not have to learn how to use, you know, a different, you know, machine.
Well, and the other thing too, is someone won't have to have ten different drivers on your laptop.
Yeah.
And obviously, any contract we break forth, I'm already, you know, solicitor, uprooting when, viewing for that too.
I have a question for you guys, how do you handle your toner replenishments? Is it automatic or is it, you know?
We can set up a couple different ways, um, we can set up automatic toner replenishments because the software tool that we use monitors toner levels, so once it hits twenty percent, we ship one out, um, users can call in, oh, okay, many different ways, yes.
Any other questions for you gentlemen?
When you said response time, would you actually repair onsite? It would be coming back like three, five days later or anything like that?
Correct. Our warehouse, our technicians carry a car stock and our warehouses are all local, so in the car stock, you'd be assigned a primary and a secondary technician should that first one call off. Um, they are assigned down to the serial number level, so that technician will be trained on that device and also have the car stock within their, their vehicle to replace the most consumables that go down, so. Um, if we can't get to it, we, we measure another, um, uh, another item, first call efficiency, how often does the technician solve the problem the first time he's out there? So, um, even if they don't, we, we promise next day, um, service, so even if we have that overnight, it parts to us to make that happen.
Is there a cost per computer, is it unlimited?
We, we structure the, um, the copier portion of this thing as unlimited black and white to mirror what you have currently with your, with your provider, Xerox. And then on the, on the color side, we have a cost per copy, um, I, I believe that's seventy-five.
Mr. Bowlen, are you available tomorrow? Go log through with these gentlemen and make sure that they, uh, see everything that we have and so you can.
Yes, sir.
Make sure that we get what we need.
You guys okay with that?
Hey, Pete, if you could, call central office and, um, ask for Mr. Bowlen, I'm not sure what time you, you know, but you can.
I'll ask him, he wants to ask her.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Price?
Yeah, Mr. Page, um, would I hand it out, on your agenda for voting is the final reading of the pre-employment drug policy. And as far as I'm aware, there's been no other suggestions, so these are what I would suggest you add to that policy for finer adoption. Um, in terms of pre-employment drug testing, my recommendation would be to include rehires, not just brand-new employees, but if somebody has left and comes back, that they would also undergo it. And then paragraph nine is what you are testing for. Paragraph ten is a requirement that before they take the drug test, that they tell the testing laboratory what prescriptions they are using. Sometimes it comes back positive and then somebody says, oh, that's because it's a prescription, well, you want to know ahead of time, so it's not an excuse for after the fact. And I also recommend, I just made up these hours, um, if you offer somebody a job, they then will go take the drug test, I think it should be within thirty-six hours, that should give them enough time to make the range. You don't want it to go on for a week or two, because then it may be a situation where they're waiting for the drug to leave their system before.
Were we going to require that be a hair follicle testing?
Uh, your policy leaves open doing either urine, hair follicle, or blood. I believe it's primarily running as a financial question, isn't it? With our testing, how much we're willing to spend.
Is a hair follicle that much more expensive?
I would have to check with the, what we spent on, what we have tested, but I don't have that, I would like to find out.
Because if it is minimal, then it definitely works on the hair follicle that goes back?
Yes, the hair follicle traces back further in history, in time. Your policy leaves that option when you didn't get any money, so. And the other one was just a short one, um, concerning, um, unlawful drug use on-site. Uh, we covered distribution, dispensing, possession, but I think you should also add under the influence, even though it kind of goes about saying, I thought it would be wise to just put that in there. So again, that line would be changed where it's highlighted in the.
You know, we.
Yes, sir.
We, we offer employment opportunities to a minimal number of, of applicants during a typical year. Uh, if the follicle test is going to give us a better read, unless it's way out of line on that part, we'll go that way.
While the policy leaving all three options, you put through directions of the administration to tell applicants it's going to be follicle, it's going to be urine, it's going to be blood. Then that will leave that option open to, to go that way.
So what do we need to make sure that director is, is, uh, clear?
I think if you want, Mr. Page, the machines to explore what the cost factor is, and it may not matter to you if you're the contractor. And I could call tomorrow the agency that we use, let people know, the board know tomorrow and they can direct you tomorrow that if this policy passes, which I assume it will, um, that you're going to go with follicle instead of urine.
There should be some consistency, there, don't I, if, if, I like the idea of, of everybody being the same test.
Okay, any other questions for you, Price?
Oh, I have one question. On people on our sub list, are they submitted to this?
It's anybody you hire and.
Okay, you can hit your own sub.
If you, if, yes, you know, if you want to exclude, I mean, I, I was assuming that it did apply to, to sub list.
Oh, yeah, actually, there's one.
Subs, coaches, anybody, hairdressers, anybody. Yeah, you, you have it applying to sports staff, professional and administrative. If you're not going to, you ought to make that clear.
Tools are unprofessional too.
My profession, I come back with a jury.
The only issue I see with that is if we have, I don't know how many people are on our substitute list, but when you added the language of the rehire, that could, and how many people are on our substitute list?
A lot.
Oh, okay.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Oh, man, just be honest.
Do you just keep adding to the sub-list, or do they get rehired every year?
Don't we approve the substitute list every year?
Yeah, but are they truly rehired, or is it just that they want to remain on if they say?
They just remain on, depending on what you want.
So we don't have to worry about that?
Other than if a new one comes in.
So they're not leaving our list and then coming back? So if they leave and come back, they would be tested?
If they leave for more than a year, they start back over at zero, then they have to start over then at that point.
Well, if it was somebody that was subbing, and then they were hired as a TPE, then we would have to test them again in the early. Correct. I would. All right, at this time, I know, I appreciate your patience, all of those that have given me letters of interest to fill this out. We have a seat for Mr. Myers in December. At this time, Board, you were given a, you know, set all the letters of interest for your review. What I will do now, before we start, if any questions with any of the candidates, is that, you know, it did inform me that there was one email that I, that was sent, it was undeliverable, and it was resent. By the time I received it, it was after the priority deadline of that date. Want to make sure that we're still okay to receive all letters of interest before you need to do that.
At this time, I'm excusing myself. I certainly feel a sort of like, I know that will put me to sit here and pick a replacement, so I wish you all the best of luck, okay?
And I'd like to say, I am so glad that there's this many people that are interested in becoming a school board member. And you know, in the spring, there'll be six boards up for grabs, so come one, come all.
I agree with you, Mr. Howard. I'm really happy to read the letters and find all the diverse backgrounds, culinary experience, previous community experience, and different educational preparation.
It's wonderful, it's wonderful to see that, like a...
I do have a concern. If we gave a deadline for applications, and we're going to extend that, I think we need to, to open this up and extend the deadline. If, if we had a deadline for applications, it should be the deadline for the application.
The email was sent to me, it was undeliverable, and whenever the applicant had realized that she did not deliver, the applicant was not home, it was resent, and I did receive it after the deadline. However, that's up to the Board, if you want to accept that or not. I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem.
And isn't, it is unfortunate, but I, I think I agree with you.
And it has nothing to do with the individual.
Oh, I know.
Has nothing to do with the applicant at all. But we've, we've been told about being transparent the last few months, and if we have a deadline, I think we have a deadline.
And I, the Board did not set that deadline, I'm not sure, we never discussed, they talked about having a deadline, and I understand that the resignation is not effective until December. We have, there's evidence that it was, and there was an attempt to submit it timely. We're not talking that it was a week late, we're talking that over the weekend, on a Friday deadline, it was forwarded. I don't think that there's an issue with acceptance of it.
There was an issue with an auction because of some advertising deadlines there. Again...
I think we left the deadline up to the superintendent.
Yeah, and whatever the deadline was, and I don't know what that was, but whatever the deadline was, it was. Now, if we want to change that and open it up again, I, I don't have a problem with that. But the deadline should be there for everybody that wants to apply. Maybe somebody, you know, says, "Gee, I'd like to apply, but I missed the deadline." I don't know.
Do you think we should extend the deadline, Mr. Price?
I don't have a problem with extending the deadline.
I think we're on a time limit, though.
Well, your, your time limit doesn't actually start to run until December, March week six, am I right? December fifth. In other words, your initial timeline is thirty calendar days after the effective date of the resignation. And then, if you don't fill it, and ten resident taxpayers petition the court to fill it, with whoever the court chooses, that's where it occurs. If the thirty days runs, and no petition is filed, you still have the ability to fill in the meantime.
Is this something that we cannot vote on replacement until the resignation is in effect?
No, you can vote ahead of time, just can't take effect of the resignation. And although Mr. Myers has chosen not to participate, he's allowed, if he's still on the Board when you make that decision, he can discuss it, but he can't vote on it. He's not permitted to vote on it.
If, if we, I don't, except that last email or whatever, is that going to open up a can of worms down?
It's entirely up to the Board's discretion, whether anybody else would come and ask you to let them come next week or next month and interview us.
But wouldn't we go ahead and fill it tomorrow?
You can't.
We can't until we...
It can only be effective December, your reorganization, right, December? I don't know if the public's aware of this, if people are complying here, but this is only for a one-year deal, so everybody's got to throw a hat and ring. No, 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 no. You will serve until the next municipal, like, general election, which will be November. The May is the primary. You continue serving until the first Monday in December of two thousand, you know, nineteen. Nineteen is your next political election. You can, they can vote on this, I would recommend doing it in December. And Mr. Myers, his last day will be December fifth, and you can vote in December with his replacement statement. Yeah, regardless, it's going to take, out of eight of you, it's going to take five votes for somebody.
Well, so we can't vote ahead of time, we wouldn't be voting tomorrow anyway.
If you can, if you wish, if you want to wait till December, you wait till December. I'm just saying, your thirty days time clock won't even start ticking for that December date.
Mr. Page, was there anybody, any other responses that you had after the deadline, or any inquiries after the deadline?
No. I did not, I did have a few that sent letters of interest that have been dropped, but I have not any other interest from anybody else.
I'm in support of accepting.
Those in favor of allowing the candidate to move forward with the interview this evening, please raise your hand. If you're in favor of accepting the letter, if you're not in favor... Is four, four? No. One? Not, if you're not in favor of accepting the letter of interest. One, two, three, four, you don't run a multiple?
It would set a precedent to all our departments that we don't care about deadlines if we accept something that's past the deadline.
If... If you vote on...
Because I have no, I want it to be known, I have no problem against the lay-out of it. That is not what, that's not what the issue is. That is not what I should say.
One hundred percent.
That is not the issue. So I don't want anybody walking out of here saying, "That is, that is not the issue."
This is not, this deadline is not just set in long, there's no, it is, this crisis, this is completely discretionary, and as a Board, we should take into consideration equity. And there's no good reason based on this, that, it's not like we've interviewed everybody and somebody came in and said, "Oh, I, I now want to come forward." This, in the interest of equity, we should accept this letter of interest.
I, I understand, I see your opinion, but it is, it is not just how I feel, so...
Unless you wanted to decide to vote in December, and if you want to put another advertisement for anybody else interested, you can have them come in.
I don't care either way, let's give it to them.
It's seven meetings, so it's...
Let's do it, we have people here.
That shame, like, people say it all the time.
We can listen to them now.
So we, we're not accepting the, the payment, right? All right, I don't think it's going to be...
If we're not going to accept any lay-out of it, then I think that we should move forward and go anywhere, right?
I don't.
Why prolong it if we're not going to accept any other applicants? That probably...
Again, remember, you can't not deliberate, deliberate, deliberate on your selection and executive set, and that's the only...
That's the whole key.
Yes, you have to be able to, that's the whole key. What I would ask is all those who have submitted letters of interest, if I can have you come with me to the first classroom on the right, where you asked it here, I will ask you all a question that you'll be able to respond to in front of the Board. But in fairness, I don't want everybody that goes second, third, and fourth, and so on, to hear the first and before those response. Okay, so you had submitted a letter of interest, and we are going to be asking you questions. Please come with me into the hallway. Some of us have what's wrong. You can mark off number fourteen and number one. Okay, the way I'm going to do this is I, you'll see the question, the bottom, that I'll ask each candidate. It's a two-part question, they'll have three minutes to respond, and they can respond to any questions you may have. Okay?
What is the time for today?
Three minutes to respond to the question. The first candidate we have is Ms. Alma Masenko. Okay, and the question, Alma, is what motivates you to want to become a board member for the Alba Gavneri School District, and what makes you the best possible candidate for the vacant seat?
Motivation for students. I have four kids, I work with all kinds of kids. They need to have a voice. I don't know, it's, I learn, I see the school board, and I've been here, but I still see that there is a gap missing. I, I wish I could personally come and talk to you, sometimes I feel like I'm not able to speak with you. I see things that happen in the school every day that I don't think people are aware of. The parents feel like they're not involved with some of what is being said. It's just, and I'm not putting blame on anybody, but I just think there needs to be a better education, or better communication, and I am definitely the voice of the parents and the students. If anybody has a problem, you call me day or night, and I will do whatever I can to help. I'm sorry, the second part was just why am I...
The second part is what makes you the best possible candidate for the vacant seat?
The years, over the years since I've become an adult, amount of time that I volunteer for anything and everyone, between, between hospitals, schools, animal centers, everybody has a need, and I'm willing, more than willing to do whatever I need to put myself out there to do what needs to be done. But I, equally, everybody has to be completely equal. I do not fix size ever, I do not like to see anyone shower, any person left behind. I am definitely the voice that will, I want to see what's right, done right.
Any part of you like that?
No, I'll take my character, if you all notice, it's right, so.
Mr. Hutchinson, we're ready for the next candidate.
Hello, Colleen?
Hello, yes.
Hi, this is Colleen Hopkins, our next candidate. Colleen, the question I'll ask is, is two-part, and you have three minutes to respond. Colleen, what motivates you to want to become a board member for the Alba Gavneri School District, and what makes you the best possible candidate for the vacant seat?
First and foremost, I think one of the biggest things that separates me from maybe others is I have two children in this district that are still very young. I actually graduated from AG as well. So I have invested interest in this area, moved back here after working out of the area for quite a few years. And I feel like this area doesn't have a great morale, especially, you know, people move out of this district, and they don't, or out of this area, don't come back, and I came back. And so I'm motivated to try to make this whole, this area, the best that I can for my children, in hopes that maybe we can create a better environment to hopefully keep some younger people around here, because we're not real successful doing that at this point. So I feel like that, along with being able to communicate well with some of the teachers, a lot of the teachers that my children have, or even teachers that are at the middle school and high school, they, once they heard that I was coming tonight, they actually were pretty supportive, that they feel like they can come and approach me about concerns that they have, that maybe they feel like they can't voice to other people.
Second part is what makes you the best possible candidate?
Well, as I said, it's a combination of things. I'm born and raised in this area, I chose to move back to this area. I truly have the best interests, I have a child in fifth grade and a child in fourth grade. They're going to be here for quite some time. And this is, my husband owns a business in the area. I work for a business, and I am the director of physical therapy for the youth group. So I have the best interest that I would be here, so this is where we plan to stay until we retire. And I feel like having maybe a new face that doesn't have any other interests other than what's best for the district, saving money, making our education better. I mean, I've been through this school when it was, I graduated in nineteen ninety-five, and things have changed a great deal in that amount of time, and things are better, things are absolutely better. I, I know that education has gotten much better since I graduated in ninety-five. But we have heard them improve, and I think that having some new opinions, some maybe different points of view, might be a good thing. And so that's why I feel like I'm probably, I'm fit for you all.
Okay, and thank you. Anything further to add?
No, just thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, and thank you. Hi, Betty. This is Betty Mosier, and Betty, thank you for your interest. I have one question, it's basically two parts. What motivates you to want to be on the Alba Gavneri School District's board directors, and what makes you the best possible candidate?
I was a member of the Board from two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen. I ran for the previous election, and I did not lose, I tied. So then there was a tiebreaker, and I did pull the higher balls, so that's why I did not have a seat on the Board. I feel, the time I was on the Board, I saw what a good school district this is, from the elementary all the way to the high school, with the administrators who are wonderful, with the teachers who are excellent, with the, a board that works well together, and I think Mark Joff here is to make this a cohesive school district from safety, making sure all the students are safe, all the faculty is safe, making a welcome environment for everybody. And I feel with my experience, I have a bachelor's degree, I have a master's equivalency, I have an elementary degree, I have a secondary math degree, I have a special education degree. They were talking about mitigator thirteen, I know all of that. I know Chromebooks, I know student learning objectives, I'm familiar with the Charles Danielson evaluation system. I've served on a committee by... I've served on a committee, a middle state committee. Right now, I serve as a department head at Laurel Highlands, worked in for 30 years as a medical school teacher.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mrs. Moore? Okay, thank you so much for your interest. And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hi, board, this is Jennifer Clark. Jennifer, thank you for coming this evening and for your interest in the Alba Gallatin school district. Jennifer, I have one question. It's kind of two parts. First, what motivates you to want to become a board member for the Alba Gallatin area school district? And what makes you the best possible candidate to fill the vacancy?
I personally want to be more involved in the community. I'm not originally from this area. I chose to move my family to this area. And I have three kids that will be, my oldest is entering the school system, and I have two more that will be entering the school system. So I want to be personally invested in their school system as well as the community as a whole. I want to make a positive influence and be a role model for others in the community.
Okay, and what makes you the best possible candidate?
I think just my personal investment in my kids. And that's the best motivation you can have.
Okay, anything further you'd like to add? Okay, and thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for your interest in the Alba Gallatin school district.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Carl.
Hello.
Hi, board, this is Carl Shisco. Carl, thank you for coming this evening. Appreciate your interest in the vacant seat. And Carl, we have one question. It's kind of two-part. First of all, what motivates you to want to become a board member for the Alba Gallatin area school district? And what makes you the best possible candidate to fill the vacancy? What motivates me is I've been in education, you know, the last 16 years. Been part of it, of course, went to school for it. You know, I believe strongly in providing strong public education for our students. You know, I think it's one of the great equalizers in society. You know, education is something that you can never get taken away. You can lose your job. You can lose your house. You can lose your family, but you can't take away some of this education. So I think it's important that everybody gets a strong public education and that we provide the best possible education, you know, give our students. What separates me, you know, I think I'm very honest upfront. You know, I think integrity and transparency are very important. You know, I love the fact that we broadcast our meetings. Maybe not everybody watches them. Maybe it's just a small number, but I know I've watched them when I'm in the make it here because of the time, whatever. And I do watch them. Maybe not all of them, but maybe just parts of them. But I think it's important to be transparent and open to people. And I think also being honest with people. You know, sometimes you have to do things that are unpopular. I understand that. That's a tough thing about being on the board. And I give you guys credit for doing it. But, you know, at the same time, you also have to listen to the people because ultimately, they're the people, you know, in charge of the district. I also think as a teacher, I bring a little different perspective because I, you know, look at things through my eyes as a teacher, how it affects me. You know, and I think the most important thing, important people we have are our staff and our teachers and our administrators because they have contact on a 20, you know, everyday basis with our students. And I think it's important to make sure we give them every tool possible to, you know, so they can do a good job.
Anything further you'd like to add, Carl?
I have notes here. Just make sure I do that. In full transparency, I want to let you know, this is my wife, and you guys see her at every meeting. She teaches the teachers in the field elementary. So I want to make sure that everybody's aware of that so I'm not hiding something. I lived at AG for 30 years, for the better part of it. As you read my bio, I'm also a US Army veteran. I served overseas in Iraq. I was in the Army Reserves for a year. And I take that perspective and try to use it in the classroom also and use it also if you guys chose to move to the board. That's it, thank you.
Hey, thank you for your interest. Thank you for being here this evening.
This is, board, this is Carl Wamiska. Carl, thank you for being here this evening. Carl, I have a question for you. It's kind of two-part. First of all, what motivates you to want to become a board member for the Alba Gallatin area school district? And what makes you the best possible candidate?
I'm motivated because I got two grandkids in the school district. And I want to try to change the football down here. I'd like the school board to change the football program to get us out of the 5A. And I just wanted, I'm a new guy on the block, and I get different ideas. And I never served on the school board before. And I lived in this school district for 71 years. I roughly read 46 years of football, baseball, softball. And I like to get on to athletics. I coached for five or six years at the Maple Top. And that's my motivation.
And what makes you the best possible candidate?
I'm in athletics. I wanted to be a football coach. I went to Maple Top for 20 years. I taught school over there. I was a president education aide. I'm trying to help the athletics at Alba Gallatin.
Anything you'd like to add? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I wouldn't. I appreciate the time with the school board. Have a great day.
And thank you for being here this evening. And thank you for your interest, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Mr. Reynolds. Board, this is Rick Reynolds, a New Mexico candidate. Rick, thank you for being here this evening and your interest in the vacancy. Rick, we have one question. It's kind of two-part. What motivates you to want to be on the board of directors for the Alba Gallatin area school district? And what makes you the best possible candidate to fill the vacancy?
Well, I would say as far as making, making this school district better for our kids, we owe it to them to make this district the best we can as board members, as adults, as parents. So I think that's probably the main reason that it's, you know, that's interested in the kids to make it better for them.
Okay, and could you elaborate on what makes you the best possible candidate for the vacancy?
Well, I think being able to work with everybody is something that we need to do here on the board, outside the board. We all need to work together for a common goal. And I think, you know, that's one reason that'd be a good fit for the board. I sit on other boards, and, you know, and it's okay to disagree with somebody. You know, it's always not, you don't always have to agree with everybody. You know, it's okay to agree and have your own opinion. That's what makes us all unique, you know. So I think basically, those two reasons, I'd give you a good fit.
Hi, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you for considering me for this position, and I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you for your interest. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Board number nine. You can scratch off those note shows. Now that happens there. We'll put the one number up. Hi, Tony.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, board, this is Tony Vaneski. He's our Mexican candidate. Tony, appreciate you being here this evening and expressed your interest in the vacant position. We have one question. It's kind of two-part. What motivates you to want to become a board member for the Alba Gallatin area school district? And what makes you the best possible candidate to fill the vacancy?
Well, there's, there's two reasons why. Number one is for the taxpayers. And number two, our status in the state for our classed position. There's 500 districts. I think we're number 472. So I'd like to see improvement in that. And I know we have declining enrollment, and I know that's going to be a burden on taxpayers. And I feel like I can do something about that. Well, I'm a businessman. I'm concerned. And I think I can make a difference on the board. I can negotiate with people. I can listen. And I can be firm in my decisions as well.
Anything else you'd like to add, Tony?
Nothing. I'm happy for the opportunity.
Well, we appreciate you being here and showing your interest. And thank you for being here this evening.
No problem.
Thank you.
Board, this is Nina Kameski. Nina, I'd like to thank you for being here this evening and expressed your interest in this vacancy on the board. Nina, we have one question. It's two-part. I'd like to ask, what motivates you to want to become a board member for the Alba Gallatin area school district? And what makes you the best possible candidate to fill the vacancy?
Well, I think what motivates me, and it's probably a two-parter. I was on the board in Brownsville area for 11 years. And then my last year, I had resigned because we moved out here to Smithville. So I had to give up my last year. And I really enjoyed being on the school board. I think what motivates me most is I do have a grandson that's in the high school. And I am for the children and for what's best for the school district. I negotiated a lot of contracts, SEIU teachers' contracts. And I always look for the best way to protect the school district and the unions. I really did. I mean, I did a lot when I, I served on every aspect, on every committee. So I do know a lot that goes on in the district, and I do know how to attack policies.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I, I think I might be good for the board. I do have some strong opinions about different things. And I noticed tonight when you were going over some things that I, you know, I've been thinking about. But I do, that I can be on there to help you do the best, what's best for the school district.
Thank you for your interest. And thank you for being here this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, board, that is, that's everybody who trusts you, correct? Those are all the candidates. I would like to thank all candidates for being patient and, you know, waiting for us to get to this part of our meeting. So I want to give thanks to all. The board, I believe we're going to add to the agenda. You're going to vote on this tomorrow night? Is that correct? I'm good with this. Okay? Anybody not vacant, please raise your hand. Okay, so we'll have that added to the agenda for tomorrow, for tomorrow night.
Mr. Peg, are you able to tell from their resumes that they all meet the one-year residency requirement?
I can review that tomorrow.
Just to make sure. One-year resident requirement.
Yes, half of the resident positions was one year prior to taking the point. So that would be one year prior to the effective date. December 5th is the date. Okay. I believe there is a need for an executive session for personnel and student confidentiality. There's nothing with contract. Right? Just, okay, just a reminder. Again, two, two things. You received a handout on some testing data. Although you can receive it, you cannot discuss it in executive session. And again, the selection of a candidate to fill the vacancy on executive session. Okay. At this time, we'll take a brief break before we go into the executive session. Thank you all for attending, and be safe. Good evening.